I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of June 19, 2019. Thanks, Vance. Thanks, Brian. Anybody see any corrections, changes? Hearing none, all in favor, keep the states so by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Absentions?
Yes.
Ayes are standing, and that motion carries. Second item on the agenda is correspondence. I did not have any.
I just wanted to pass around the correspondence that the HEP School Boards Association sent to everyone, and I just put it in a hard copy so you know what happens. The entire year worth of training that's out there, they may have different trainings coming up, and they'll notify all board members if they do. If there's any training that you would like, just call Jeanette and she'll sign you up for it, and sometimes you can do it from your home if it's a webinar, and if you want, you can sometimes be doing it from the studio.
There was a non-publicated study.
Oh, right. We did have a non-public, right?
Six seventeen.
We don't have the minute. We can put that up for next time. Also, I followed it along and take a step back because I'd like to welcome a new principal to the school, and nice to have you here tonight. Glad to meet you earlier than the gymnasium, so. The second item on the agenda is the business administration report.
There's a manifesto.
Do you have those?
Yeah. They're in the back.
No, we have the.
Yeah.
Oh, I get it. I get it.
Yeah.
Well, the manifesto's going around, and it's just really important when we don't have meetings as often, that if you can stop by the S.A.U., when I send out the email, I hope you guys will all get my emails, just so we can keep things going and I can send out the checks so the vendors aren't waiting, because I don't think our next meeting is until the end of August, so. And we're, you know, I'm either doing payroll or accounts payable. And, that's it.
Dr. McGann, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to let you know, first of all, that the projects are doing just fantastic. Everything's going along smoothly. We have weekly meetings with the company, and it's just, everything's right on time. We're a little bit ahead of schedule. And we, in my memo, I had mentioned that we did have a painter, we just got a painter literally this past week, so we started today. So they started their painting process. The fields are looking great. They already did the process, and they're going to process on the outfield, and they're going to be working on the infield. And, but they look great. You can really see a big difference in them. A lot of mowing.
Yeah. Pretty big.
Hey.
Yeah.
Summer school started July 8th. We did have a little bit of a different schedule this year. We did start the high school summer school a week before July 4th week, only because Dave Wexler was available that day and those high school students were available to do it. So they just started a week early. They took a week of July 4th off, and then they continued for July 8th. They didn't, some of them need a little more time with their summer school, so we added on that extra week, so they can do their work. And everything's working fine and going very smoothly. The student parent handbook and staff handbook are in process of being updated. The student parent handbook, and I have some from this past year, I'll pass those around, it's the same exact, the only difference is we're updating all of the policies, and the policies that relate to students will be in that notebook, the student handbook. And also, we update the staff, obviously. So those are the two things we will be updating. Right now, it's a new company, and everything is online, so I cannot get a hard copy to give to the board, but it is online, and we're communicating back and forth with the company. All we do is give them our revisions, and they do all the revising. We don't have to format the page, we don't have to, you know, and there's no formatting that goes around well, that's being transported from, you know, one computer to another. So it is working out very well, so. And that staff handbook is almost updated. We have collected all of the staff input throughout the year, going through the handbook and doing it. Sean Higgins is working on that, so we completed that, and the administrative team will be meeting and putting that together for the teachers for the fall. I did talk with, I communicated with Mark Dolan from the HEP School Boards Association, and he had suggested that we start as early as the fall and send out a notice to all the stakeholders and see who wants to. Says up to 10 to 12 people will be on the committee for the strategic plan, and that will wait till the teachers get back, so that the staff get back, so we can have everyone look at the notice all at the same time, and so no one misses out on that. I did go to attend the workshop in Baltimore, if you know. I was so excited, I was starting to go into Washington to see it. It was 10 minutes away, and I never left the hotel room. We were in the hotel, we were in the hotel the whole entire time for four days, but it was a magnificent conference, and it was a national conference, so you bargained a lot of schools from around the country. It was just amazing how similarities, how much similarity there is between all the different schools, and discussions of the issues and concerns of all the other schools that have it as well, you know, just our school. But this is something we're definitely going to look into for next year, for a team to go. It's good to have a team, and you can spread out, go to all the different things, and we'll do that, work that throughout with grandness and much. I did talk to Trey regarding the website and the lunch payment system, and those, again, the website will be in place by August 12th, and lunch payment will be launched with the updated website. So that is, the infrastructure is in, and everything is secure, and we're going to move forward with that. The rest we can do on the, with the agenda. Also, just wanted to let you know, the admin team with Mark, who will be meeting with Wayne Philling tomorrow, two in the afternoon, to update for the elementary and royalty project.
Anyone have a question?
I had some questions on the website, and they're still getting on the line. I don't know if anyone even knows this, but the current version, some teachers have listed on the staff directory.
Right.
So I brought, I think I brought it up back in June, so then I was looking at it on my phone, I don't know if it's just specific to phones, or it does not appear to also, but some staff members are highlighting, so it's like a hyperlink, so you can click on them and go to their personal page, and some of them have. I don't know, they don't have an Adrian King in there.
It's very inconsistent. The mobile, the program was not, it was not consistent with each person's mobile. We didn't, when we had a website committee meeting in June, I mean, that, all those things came up, so that will be out.
Okay. And one of the other things was, I would click on a specific staff member, and it would redirect me to my own Google mail, like sign in account, so I mean, this is definitely like.
But you'll have to try each one.
It was several staff members. So I'm like, oh, I'm not sure what happened.
Okay.
And again, that could be just the mobile version.
Could be, but that's not supposed to happen.
Okay.
The elementary and the art flooring will begin August 1, and the last approximately one will complete that.
Can I ask a question on that? When they do the flooring in there, maybe you said this, what's the, what are we going to have on it? Is there going to be a logo in the middle?
Logo in the middle, yeah. We're, I sent him out measurements, and one of the things that is concerned about, the circle might be larger than the circle there, it's there now, because he wants the lumberjack to be seen.
Sure.
You know, and to keep the circle there down, let the guy be a little guy. Doesn't matter about being a little guy, but anyways, but yes. But with that, though, you'll have all the same lines out here, everything.
Great.
Did we decide on the stage?
Stage two.
Same stuff?
Same material, yeah. So that way, someone was to follow the steps and stuff, it's all that padding and stuff.
Awesome.
Just a point of process for the handbook, that'll come to the school board before it goes out?
Yes.
And on the fields, Mark, before they do the infield, are they going to wait till after the fall sports to cut the infield again, or are they going to do it before? I just wonder.
What's going on with that is, I will be taking care of that. I'm waiting for a drag, it's got a specific drag he wants to use, but we're not touching it until he redoes both fields, and then he set me up on a schedule where I'll be doing it at least once a week to prevent any weeds from coming up, that's what I hear.
Okay.
So we don't have, we're like, we're meeting on this. How are we going to, how are we going to handle that?
We'll have to get the board members to me as soon as, because it's online anyway, it's on.
Can I ask a question about that as well? What are the, we've got a lot of policy updates, and we have some tonight, I think, with all the stuff that we gave to the handbook.
The new, the policies that, all the policies that we've done that were, that refer to students will go into the handbook.
Including the?
And this one is, that's the last one that has to go in as far as the cellphone one?
No, tobacco.
Oh, tobacco, yeah, that will go in.
But the cellphone one?
Cellphone one is the one I, that I sent to the policy committee to look at, and I do have a copy for everyone today as well to look at.
Yeah. And I was actually, I was just wondering about that, what is our plan, are we trying to get that into the handbook before?
That policy, I mean, the.
The cellphone one?
Yeah, the use agreement, yeah, that one we'd like to be into.
So we need to have like, maybe we need to have a meeting about that or something, or just a policy meeting about that?
Yeah, we can get it on the policy meeting.
Because it's, yeah, I don't know, there's a certain agreement on.
We're going to talk about that tonight, huh? Are we talking about that tonight?
Well, I have the policy here, so that the policy committee and board can look at it. And.
Oh, I thought that was right.
Yeah. And we still have to move over with, I mean, you know, that's the same process as all the other policies, still to discuss it and revise it and.
I mean, we just, I think we do like all this stuff with the policy committee and deal with the board on that issue.
We'll still go through the policy committee and then go to the board on that. And if we don't get this one in, this will be just a separate policy we'll add as an addendum to the.
Should just add it online.
Right, set it home afterwards. It has to be signed in.
Any other questions?
Matt, this is appropriate. When it comes to the handbook, this is one of the reasons I came, I wasn't sure if it popped up on the agenda, because we've had issues with the approval of the handbook in the past. That's one of the curiosities I had coming tonight, because I realized that we didn't have a meeting for six more weeks. Policy CHCA says that the board must approve and adopt the handbook before it's printed and distributed. I don't know if that means it needs to come to a vote before that.
I think we're going to have to have a meeting before, because there's some other things that have got to come up later on that are going to require a meeting. Anybody else?
What's the deadline again? Sorry. Maybe I said this.
Not sure what the deadline is. Maybe the beginning of August.
To get the.
I do.
Okay.
So I guess the 28th, you think so?
Well, I mean, we probably, if you have to have another one going through the agenda, we'll probably end up.
There's just too many things that have to be. We're going to have to meet.
Yeah.
We're going to have to meet sooner or later.
And I think the policy meeting is going to be before, right?
Yeah. Meetings.
I mean, it would be nice to be able to, if we meet, to be able, I guess we can't, there's no way to get a second meeting before the time for it to, doesn't look like that's going to get us in the handbook.
Cellphone probably will be home.
No.
Well, there's no address to use, so why not give it a hand? Well, we had policies when we pulled straight to second reading.
We've gone to second reading, but then I also, we've also put into, you know, when we've got handbooks going out and the policies are running at the same time, say, as approved per board approval, you know, at the bottom of that policy.
I don't think the issue's specific to this policy, the issue is that we have to approve the handbook before it's printed.
Right, that's the.
Because any policy that we put into place is effective immediately, right? So if it needs to be home, and it needs to be noticed to parents, and it will go home and that sort of thing. But the issue as far as the process is that we need to approve the handbook before it's the button's pushed.
Right, and what I'm saying, we, I don't think we can get this policy before we can get it approved before it needs to be approved.
So it'll just go in as a policy that we have now, that just go in as that?
We'll be updated and go home.
Which is like any other, every other meeting, we're approving policies that change, so they just get added up on.
Right. Any other questions? Mark, did you have anything you want to write forward?
I do.
All right.
First of all, thank you for having me. I'm really looking forward to this, I think it's going to be a great time, ups and downs, but it's going to be a learning curve for myself and everybody else, and, you know, I've gotten a lot of support from Dr. McGann, from the central office people, Mark and Jay and some, even some employees, there's some faculty members now, so. Getting to know them, we went on a three-day conference, the NHLI Power Learning Conference, and it was seminars based on math, project-based learning competencies, there's some DLS that go on with social and emotional things, a lot of the hot topics, basic education right now, and we were able to collaborate afterwards as a team, you know, I was joined by Carol, Crystal Thad and Bar, Paula Hood, Jane Doyle, and myself, and, you know, there were some really interesting conversations we were able to have, and, you know, it just made me want to, you, it just made me want to, I don't know, get started even earlier, you know, can't wait till the rest of the career comes in, so I think we have a lot of good, positive things happening here, it's just a matter of even us move towards the right direction. There was a wonderful presenter, his name is Mike, we're studying as an educator from New Hampshire, he also speaks, and he writes books, and he did a presentation, you know, based on his book, it says, "What We Say and How We Say It Matters." And Jimmy and I were talking afterwards, and I really feel like we need to maybe think about bringing in the meeting to figure out how we can deal and talk with kids and talk with each other, so I'm excited, and it's going to be good. It's going to be tough within your eyes, and we talked about it, it's going to be good, and I'm looking forward to it. I also wanted to let you know that we have some coaches for the fall, I was asked to let you know that we have your soccer coaches for middle school boys and girls, the girls' soccer coach is Guinness Dropper, the boys is going to be Adam Denati and Jim Martin as the assistants, the high school girls' coach is Tony Dropper, the high school boys' coach will be Blair Reading and Nathan Jinks, we have a cross-country coach, Sarah Oden, and the summer league basketball coach, assistant, yeah, with his dance. So those places are in place, and I know there's still a few other questions. That's what I got, so.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Now we have second reading for policy, I don't think any committees met since last meeting. We can look at the policies as the second round of the motion.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just me, I keep reading it, I've been doing it for a while, the difference between J E V D and J O B C.
Yeah, so this was the thing.
And I can't find, please just tell me this.
It's how they file it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so there's, they're, it's supposed to be identical, and we, this was something that they were originally different, but we have basically made them identical because they're identical policies, but they're just in different places in the policy. Different places in the layout, and so there's a couple of policies that are like this, that are coming up through the chain, where we're like, why are we doing this again? We could just do this, but apparently, the way that everything's laid out, that's, this is where they are, and so when we see that, we just try to make sure that, like, they are the same, because they're supposed to be the same. But yes, they, they're identical.
I did speak with Derek Christina on that, he had come to visit the board at last meeting, and I asked him a question that we had mentioned about duplicating policies, and he said they are working on that, and they're working on taking that component out of the picture.
Oh, good.
So that was.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's, there's a couple, this is the first, this is the last one we were asking.
Oh, no, I kept reading it, thinking it was crazy, because for some reason, the print is like changed by maybe one font, so the lines don't line up, so I'm thinking there's extra words, and I couldn't believe, like, I tried to find a keyword in the middle and match it.
No, you got us there.
Yeah, hold it up to the light.
There is a slight difference in facility, I'm not sure if that's an oversight, but it's just, what's on storage areas, the other one, it looks like there's, I have a, I guess what says, storage areas, bathrooms, restrooms, laboratories, classroom, study areas, there was missing a few of those things. Do you want to amend that?
Some passes here, so I can.
Yeah, I mean, I think they're supposed to be identical. That's what we talked about, but I think the stuffs like that was, you know, we're studying, I think, on the definition of facility, there were two of them, they slept in different language there.
So what is that one?
J I C G and J E V D, and I think if we just add the one that's in J E V D, the definition of facility, it's a J I C G, but J I C G, so that way it's the same.
J E V D, J E V D is the correct one. G B. G B E D.
J E V D is the correct one, it's the word, uh, all come together.
So they both seem to have the same.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve policy G A D A, G B E C, G B E D, J I C G amended, the facility portion amended to match policy J E V D, policy J C A and J E C. Thank you, Joe. Any further questions and discussion? Second one. Thank you, Vance. All in favor, please signify as a aye. Opposed, nay. Absentions? That motion carries. Business requiring board action, staff nominations?
The nominations? Yes, I do. I have one nomination, school nurse Francine Hewitt Corral.
Corral?
Corral. She's a graduate, currently running the name, is relocating to Lincoln again, and has been in nursing for 35 years.
I'll make a motion to accept the nomination of Francine Hewitt Corral as school nurse.
Second.
Thank you, Vance. Any questions? All in favor, please signify as a aye. Opposed, nay. Absentions?
Stay.
And that motion carries.
Thank you for the recommendation. Recommendation for library aide, Melissa Stable.
Library aide, Melissa Stable. I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of Melissa Stable for the position of library aide. Thank you, Joe, second. Any questions? All in favor, please signify as a aye. Opposed, nay. Absentions? And that motion carries. Nothing on the new business? There isn't anything on the continuing business, but I'd like to bring forward the conversation regarding the school sign. Again, we talked about that, I think the last conversation, we say back in April.
April.
April. You said that we would bring that forward later on as we were discussing significant other, other significant projects, but if that's something that we're looking to do, then we need to, we need to make a decision on which sign we can do, to have a trust fund hearing to do that, so that's why we require.
I thought we decided, well, not we decided, I thought it was discussed, and there was no money for that last time we talked about it, that was being cut off, we didn't have a funding board.
It was not in the budget, but it could be funded from a trust fund.
Yeah, yeah, with a trust fund, yeah.
Didn't we decide the budget, like, all of the trust fund?
Well, in the equipment trust fund, there's about $25,000 in there, and in facilities right now, there's about $89,000.
That includes all appropriations?
Yeah.
Distributed in the.
Yeah, wouldn't it come out of trust? Oh, oh, get back into it. Back into the impact.
That, well, no, I haven't put anything into the account yet, so hopefully.
What's the anticipated figure you should submit? We're not going to have to go back into this space.
I'm hoping that it's going to be what we, it's going to be close, but I'm hoping we're going to have a hundred thousand in total going back into the trust fund, 60 in the facilities.
60,000, yeah. We recently, we recently spent a bunch of money in the trust fund, we've done a number of different projects.
Yeah.
And even after all of those projects are fully, they're going to be somewhere in the 80s.
The only thing that I probably haven't accounted for yet is the remaining, once we get through the infrastructure grant, because we're funding the 20%.
I think she's a little, she's had 60 in the fall.
You just clarify that, so we have, right now, we have roughly 89,000, anticipating another 60,000 in the fall tax, now you go back into, I think it's going to be 250,000.
And then what is it, sort of spoken for?
The only other thing that's spoken for that we haven't put in, and I haven't accounted for, is the balance of the 20% that we would pay on the infrastructure grant, with the biggest project being the vestibule going on right now, so, well.
About 20, 30,000?
Probably another 40,000.
And then, and then about, would that include?
So 40, yes.
We recently?
It will be a little over 100, 110.
We recently spent money for the engineering?
Yeah, that all kind of.
I hesitate to use the credit trust fund just because it's not a lot of.
Yeah. But.
So I thought you referenced that first.
I did reference that.
Would you go from here or now?
It could go from here.
Wasn't there discussion about taking some of the technology because of the?
Oh, it could be technology, yeah, that was the other fund that we're looking at. Technology is about 19,000 because it's.
Would not be the best way to do it if we choose to do the other thing. But we have to make a decision on what we're doing first, though. Then we can decide on which trust.
Or if I just remember that discussion.
Yeah, and we can, we can piece this together in different ways, you know, different pieces, yeah. It's anywhere there to keep us in that position.
We should just have figured out which.
We have to figure out what we're doing. I have the, I have the quotes, I can pass these along. Do we have other copies?
Does anyone have a?
We had them.
In the meeting, that's where they're attached.
This is the only meeting I did bring my bag with, and it's in my bag in the car.
But I have.
So we had, we had quotes of, kind of hollow.
Do you want to, whatever you, do you have yours?
No. Electrocution. We had quotes ranging from roughly 11,000 to that, up to 25, right?
Yeah, they're all. How many different pieces would it be?
If I remember correctly, from our last conversation, we were looking towards a new sign, the new card sign with the lumberjack on it, that sort of thing, right? And then, and then a one-color LED.
Yeah, well, that's by code, it has to be by the town code, so I think it'd be one color.
Yeah, and there was no, and it was, it's like more dollars, half a dollar.
Yes, and it can't roll, right? Good job.
The goal is just to have the information on it, it's a good few pages.
No, but it would be nice for them to be able to change the sign from the office instead of walking. Hasn't Mark run down there with that letter?
Oh, no, no, I'd say electronic wise, it'd be nice, because you're interested, but some of the things that were proposed to us was like being at a state.
Pretty much.
Yeah, we don't need a $5,000 television.
We can give you.
There's not a lot of use for it.
Yes, switch, yeah.
Like, we can only have, I don't know what it is, but it's like 30 seconds or something to have, things have to remain the same before they have to change, they have to, it's a specific number of times. I like the one that just check pillars had the wood sign and had the thing on it.
Can I ask, what are we looking at doing tonight about this? Are we looking to just bring it up for?
Well, first, we've got to make a decision in the future hearing, to do something with this.
You want to get the sign in before school starts?
I think that was, isn't.
Well, I don't know if that's feasible.
It's probably not feasible before winter. And if we, oh, last year, I don't know. Yeah, I thought it really felt like school start.
The reality is, we're gonna have, we have one scheduled meeting between now and September fourteenth.
Oh, we're gonna need to.
No, I'm saying, if we didn't, like, just bring it off, then we're actually bringing it up down the road, and then, then it's November. And then for her, six feet of snow.
I just think we're rushing to, I'd really like to put a sign in. Now, we're still sticking with the same pillars and everything, Mark, is that correct? Same pillars?
Yeah.
I didn't read it, but what's the composite, is it a composite sign or?
What they're gonna do is composite, so, yeah. The rust, uh, rotten, that's rust.
So, what I recall here was, last time we talked about this, you said that there was, um, we had everything that we need. As far as, like, electricity and communications wise, we're really doing this from up in the office, it's all already there, so like, does, this price includes?
Pretty much, pretty much everything, it might be, you know, five, six hundred dollars, but not much. That, that was with the software, everything to operate.
Yeah.
And we have the telemetry, we have one that's on the back of the building that used to go to the S A U, that I don't believe was using, or it's hard wired over there. Now for the hitchman. Yeah. I'm sorry, I don't mean to put you in this spot like that.
It's to get our window.
Yeah. But, uh, but no, we, we have all the stuff that we need to do that. I've talked to Trey about it. The other thing too is, uh, the company has been calling me back, and their prices have come down.
Oh.
Okay, so I would like to send it in and get something because.
Can you get it from Bryce? What's that, can you get it from Bryce, Boris?
Well, that's what I want to do, but you gotta know what you want.
You said the price is coming down.
Price is coming down, yeah, because he, uh, they offered me fifteen percent, which is quite a bit.
Well, that'll cover the dig in the electric and.
Well, the pole's only fifteen feet.
Yeah, but it's still.
You can, Kevin, you can do it. It's free, though, the sign's coming from.
They go to Walmart by television, two hundred bucks, that's fifty in television. For some reason, that LED board cost twenty-five thousand dollars. But that's where I just have a tough time with it.
Different companies, I didn't even know it was the same company.
The sign, the sign itself, oh, is that falling apart?
No, no, I understand that.
Yeah, the LED, I don't think that has to be the same time.
But, maybe that's, oh, I mean, we had a new, laminated, whatever.
There wasn't enough.
Sign that said.
When I was there, I think a screwdriver would throw it.
So, I just sort of see, maybe it's because it is there, and then the special products, I didn't, they, but. I have no idea. It's probably what they, I would say. Sorry, I just want to talk to Jason, and I just want to be thinking about what.
See, we could try to, uh, then have, they're good, they're more than. Does that make sense?
That's what I probably do with it, like. So you talk about putting aside, and it's gonna cost us twenty-five thousand dollars, which thirteen thousand makes a field.
Yeah, but if you do that, they're gonna have to just put that little junky tree, but it was out there, and I knew it's something, so.
The other problem is, this is not one, it's not current, it's not, it's not.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna put that in, so, you know, modification, whatever, maybe it's based for.
Yeah, the other, the other positive, if I can speak, the other positive thing about it is that for some reason we have to go into lockdown, or anything like that, it can't be changed. You know, we have to send someone else there to try to change the sign, to send the buses away, or that sort of like. And I know if my people, we didn't do that way, along with the reverse call.
There's zero doubt we want it, we want it. I said, there's zero doubt, we definitely want it, I mean, I'm not speaking for everybody, but that sign needs to be changed, and you want to do it the best, most efficient way. The nicest looking way, and kind of a traditional way too. Minus the LEDs, I remember Tony was talking about trying to keep it as traditional as it is now, but.
Yeah, can I speak with?
Of course.
Matt, give.
Can I continue to speak?
Joe brought my name into it.
I did.
Just because this, this is the idea, I brought this up when I was on the board. And I think, I've gone through those packets, and obviously you guys will go through them a little more detailed. And I think keeping the sign the way it is, and then, you know, having that kind of nice, traditional look we have with the panel, with LED panel, was the most expensive option, unfortunately. You know, the cheaper option we're looking at there was like a complete sign fabricated by them, that's kind of like the clear panel, or like kind of plexiglass type panels. And I think that's kind of where we kind of hit the wall, discussing this before, is which way to go.
Yeah.
And I think is, I, I think we were kind of looking towards just having one of those two choices. You know, have Lincoln sign, or whoever had did that up before, produce a traditional sign, and these are replaced with a rotting one anyway. And what it would, because I don't think we got a cost of what it would just be to put in that LED screen. Like, everything they sent us, they're trying to sell us the whole sign.
Yes.
So, you know, the price would probably come down, because it's a combination of those two.
So realistically, we could have somebody make a traditional sign, and just buy the LED from somebody else.
You're putting a two-line LED in, insert.
There should be a price for the sign and the price of the LED.
So, let me, I don't know, so this is, we're gonna have another meeting, right? You obviously can't, like, decide which one we want with, right, at this point, when we have, you, like, we're giving the specs that we're looking for, and.
Yes, I'd like to know whether you want to go red, green, you know, the two-line.
All of this stuff here is all color, it's all like, this is got like a fourG wireless, live size cellular data link, like, software trading online, and all kinds of seemingly stuff that, you know.
Yeah, well, I think most of those are from that company.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just, there's a lot of information, like, if that happens, I want every time I buy this, we'll get a message. I wanted to tell me the, like, Mark got here, like, at seven oh five today, waiting for a party.
Carol had a great day. And give the thing that give the information.
Otherwise, for the sake of, and I understand the sake of, you can bring up, and it's cool like that, or like, hey, congratulations, Steve Dean, you guys did it again, or.
I think we'd have a lot more with a digital sign. You know, I have, have us go down and set it up, and I'm sorry to talk about it.
No, no, I just, it's, it's, I have a tough time with it because of the arguments that I've been in over money, that doesn't equate to that, it's actually necessary. Like, that's one color. Welcome to our school, awesome, and then, like, make your bed, want to get dirt in the field. In fact, that's just where I, like, when I read that, I have a tough time with, like, the cost, like, I know it's a passion thing, this degree, I guess, if you want to have a nice sign. And like, we want it to be like traditional, and I didn't go to school here, and I understand that, but. I have a, I really don't like it, big money being spent on.
I have a problem with that much money being spent on a sign.
You know, I, I feel like, I think maybe the market's communication with, like, what's the name, that Lincoln sign, it's like, like. How can we do this, and maybe make sense, like, here are the numbers, they, they see a perfect, like. You know that the sign, like, that's out at one lumber room, it didn't cost fifteen thousand dollars. Beautiful sign, it's not the same, but like, there has to be some kind of way, and then maybe like Jay said, then we look at, like, as long as there's a space left, you can add brackets, and we could probably go. And you could probably find something that's relatively simple, you know? I don't, I don't know, or like, a message board.
But that's.
Pretty sure, like, the restaurant message board, if you see a restaurant, they don't go on that kind of money.
That's the first thing that people see when they come in here, those, we want something. It's the first thing that people see, that's the only thing they really see when they're driving down the road, as far as Linwood School, is that sign. Yeah, I'd rather draw their eyes to the sign.
All right, so why don't we, um. Is that facilities committee, uh, decision?
No.
To, to decide.
We're gonna break something for.
Yeah.
Right, so at least, like, make.
So, Mark, if you could get some information together and kind of narrow it down. With the LED, one color, that sort of, I don't think we need all the different colors and all that sort of thing.
Right, okay.
Give it to one color, and see what that, what the price point looks like on that. We can meet as a facilities committee. And then, and then if we can call another meeting.
Red or green?
What, what is the, what does the data show as more effective, red?
Uh, well, according to Mr. Griffin, green. No, um, it just, depending on what you like, green.
Red would be nice, that's like a school color.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, red. Green's more expensive, especially if you're in mass. You have to pull in more electricity to that dial.
Let's find out which one we need, say. Whichever color's easiest to see from a driving car at thirty miles an hour.
Well, that's gonna leave me out. Yeah, yeah, okay, I will do that.
Thank you. Or, or something. There's no student, Carol, welcome.
Hello. Good to see you all, thank you. It's going great, thank you for approving Melissa. She texted me when she got the offer, and I told her I was gonna have to restrain myself from cheering, but I, I might do it anyway, so if I start cheering.
Now we're happy to.
It's love that. Yeah, it's good to have her back.
Yeah.
Um, I was surprised, I sent out an email to staff, and I actually got answers about what they wanted me to tell you. I'll start with Mark, since he is here. Mark wanted you to know that Katie Black has donated twelve hours over time, with more to come, overhauling our flower gardens. And she is doing fantastic.
Good job, Katie.
Uh, Dave Webster mentioned something Mark did, that summer school's going well, and he said there's only a week and a half to go. And then the other reports are from the girls and the boys of summer. Heather wanted to thank you for supporting the girls of summer. They've had as many as fifteen girls from grade seven to twelve join them for their weekly hike. Nine girls of summer joined Heather, Rebecca Steves, and Linwood alum Marissa Cassie for their overnight on, at Mount Washington. They still have Greeley Pond and Canyon left to do. Erin and Chad wanted you to know that the boys of summer have had outstanding hikes as well, they thank you as well, and the administration, for supporting them. This year, they have hiked Sugar Bowl from Twin, Welsh and Dicky in Kempton, Hedgehog in Albany, Arathusa Falls to Frankenstein Cliff, that was the Pommel Hike with the girls. And then they did a camping trip at Lafayette Place, and then they did the Ridge. And he, I was impressed, because I, I checked this with Steve, he got all the elevations correct. Haystack at forty-seven sixty, Mount Lincoln at fifty-eighty-nine, and Mount Lafayette at fifty-two sixty. I thought that was pretty impressive.
It's hard all the way back.
And I guess that's it.
Thank you. Community.
Mr. Manning. I apologize that I didn't bring this to your attention earlier, it was kind of last minute, because I realized that you weren't having another meeting for six weeks. And it kind of goes part and parcel with the whole handbook thing. Going back to new business of, of April seventeenth, the last thing that I kind of brought forth, which was the grading system. You know, policy I K A. And at the time, we, we had a brief discussion about it, we decided to table it, Judy's suggestion that a committee was formed to discuss the grading system and where to go with that. And that it would be approved until after July first, Mr. Furbinow was here, and obviously, you've been here for two weeks, and it's probably not high on the priority list, there's a lot of stuff on your plate. But, and, and as I say this, it's more administration's thing to deal with, but as far as the board is concerned, the current policy that's in place, as I may have mentioned before. Not the, I should say, the grading system, is in violation of the school board policy. Now, the, the policy clearly says that it must be approved by the board. And as the board members who were here at the time know, that didn't happen, no fault of Mrs. McGann, it was, you know, brought forth at the last minute, stuck in our handbook by a prior administrator. And that was the way we operated the last two years. And my concern coming in today was, we're gonna prove the handbook, this thing's gonna stay status quo, we haven't any time to talk about it, or you haven't any time to talk about it, it's been put on the back burner. I understand, you know, with the time constraints, if everything stays status quo, and usually status quo is fine if something's not broken. But I do think it's broken, and it's something that the board never approved. And I think that the grading system where the, the passing rate was a sixty prior, was the last thing that the board ever approved of or ever heard of. You know, the passing being raised to a seventy was never discussed at board level, until it was in the handbook a week before school started. And that's kind of where we are, so obviously. That's on administration to form a committee and kind of discuss what's best suited there, and maybe the school board should have an input of where that mark is. The other thing that kind of came into my mind recently was how we're handling interns. Because we have interns listed throughout our policies, how they affect eligibility, we print them out on our calendar that say, interns close this day, they're distributed this day. And interns were not used the last two years, alum. Again, that was an administration, or past administrators' decision. But it'd be good as a parent, going into this school year, to know what's going on with interns, are we only gonna have four marking periods, or are we gonna have eight? And I don't know if we need to really go back to the, the system of where we're printing out interns and sending them home, because theoretically, we have web to school. And we should be able to keep up with our children's grades through web to school. But unfortunately, I feel like when interns are pushed aside, it creates less accountability for teachers to stay on top of the grading. Because I sent an email on May twenty-third to Judy, Mr. Courier, and Mr. Quinn, we were six weeks into the final quarter with three weeks left. And my high school student had no grades in two of her classes. And I expressed a concern of how that, I had no concerns about my own student, given her past performance, but. Yeah, I had concerns about how that would affect students when it came to their eligibility, because it hinges on that, not on that, but getting credit for the year, and whether or not they have to take summer school. And, you know, grades are thrown in last minute, kids don't really have an opportunity to go back, and in the spirit of competent-based education, redo any of that work, or, or redo that. And I know that there are student athletes who are now ineligible for this fall, who have now become victim of that change that the board did not approve. And again, I, you're not prepared for any of this, then I'm throwing it on your plate, I'm expecting too much answers back, but I just wanted to put that out there, because I think the intern thing is a big thing. Like I said, we don't need, I personally think we don't need paper interns anymore. But there has to be some consistency, and I know things are gonna hopefully change, gonna change administration, that we have that little more, little bit more oversight. But it's extremely frustrating for a parent, and I can't imagine being the parent of a student who has now lost a season of athletics that's extremely important to that child. Based on the fact that there are no steps in place to support that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Interms, are you, are you saying interns are actually marked grade, or is that traditional terms of progress report?
Sorry.
Okay, so when you, when you say interim.
Yes.
Okay, so, when I hear interim, traditionally it means a progress report. So we have four quarters, halfway through, you get a progress report.
Right.
That was my, that wasn't, so, we're not really looking at eight quarters, you just.
No, 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 no.
The progress report.
Yeah, it's a progress report. But as I said, you know, there, there's, there's certain policies tied into that, and specifically the eligibility policy that says, you know, student athletes must be passing X amount at this point. If they're not, they're off the team, if they're already off the team, they can get back on the team, but that system's kind of slid out the door the last two years.
Fine, it's funny to bring it up, because on a related topic, Mr. Lapp, our new athletic director, called me today to tell me that. Since being hired as assistant to Mac for basketball, that somehow it's a bit cracked, and I need to go, yeah, Akron check, you know, a teacher at another school, I have one, but just have one on the body of Jim. So, in that conversation, we talked about a lot of athletic things, and I said, hey, I think it's changed over the years, I'm not prepared to ask you this, but. In terms of athletic eligibility, are we using a four marking period reporting eligibility, or are we gonna also use the midterm reports? He says, R C U, we're using midterm reports, and we're gonna, we would have eight periods.
Yeah, but, the reason that Mr. Courier made the change to not use those intern barter reports.
You should remind me, did we use eight marking terms eligibility last year or not?
Depends on the case. But, the reason that, there, there was a kind of a, it didn't. But the reason that, there was a kind of a, it didn't gel up with N H I A, because N H I A says that a marking period determining eligibility must be a minimum of six weeks. So when you're going from a report card to a progress report, it was only four weeks or five weeks.
Yeah.
So it didn't go by what N H I A said as far as determining eligibility. So, but, again, I mean, that's a, that's a policy that's several years old now, that probably needs to be relooked at.
Right.
To go with a different philosophy. But I can tell you, you know, last year, yeah, there were students who were able to regain eligibility at progress report. I think Mr. Courier took the approach that he wasn't gonna have kids lose eligibility, but they could regain it.
Yeah.
If they're passing at that point, or, and, but it didn't happen the first year, so there's a lot of inconsistency there.
Okay. So I think his intention is to use those, but I don't know.
Who's intention?
All right, Mr. Lobster.
Well, he doesn't determine eligibility.
Right.
Administration does.
I think, I think there's only pressure to use it last year, but I don't, I didn't, I brought it up, because I didn't...
Well, I think, you know, back to my other point of, it's hard to determine someone's eligibility when there's no grades in it. Right?
Right, yeah, that's true.
Which Web to school is supposed to, you know, fix, as we've known through the different variations over the year. That's how students can track their progress, and teachers can keep up, I mean, parents can keep up on it.
I had the same situation with my student. Grades weren't put in until like very last week of school. And so she didn't know what she was missing in some ways. So, I mean, she should have known what she was missing, but, yeah.
Can I just say something about that?
Yeah.
No grades don't indicate failure to me. Because, I mean, you can add four by assignments that teachers still kind of love to put in. So at an interim grade, or no grade, okay, teachers behind needs to get caught up in that.
Sure.
But no grade, no marks whatsoever, I don't know, that just doesn't sound like a failure to me, which would deem them ineligible.
No, and that wasn't the case. I think my concern was, you get to that point where you're past that progress report, and there's no grade. And now you're three weeks from the end of the quarter, and all of a sudden, six grades show up. And now they're, well, I did that assignment a month ago, how am I supposed to go back and reassess on that? And then bring that grade up?
Right, and the philosophy behind the competency-based education is that they get a, they get a note that says, look, you're not up to snuff here, you get an opportunity to reduce some of the stuff, to get yourself up to where you need to be. And then that grade changes, but I guess you don't know...
But if you get six essays back in one week, and you're like, how can I fix all six essays in one week and still keep up with all my other work?
Right.
So, that's the problem.
And I think that that's sort of, that's problematic, I think, I've also heard, since I've been on the board, that there's some teachers that are, that are fully appreciating the distinction between the summative and formative assignments, and the grading that's supposed to, and the ninety-ten rating that's supposed to roll along with that. And so, I mean, I think that if we're gonna have this, this place, this kind of grading system in place, or this sort of competency-based education place, that everyone's gonna be on board with, and everybody's dealing with it. And if that includes requiring, if we put the, the grades a little more complicated, then administration will be sure.
Great, I don't understand the role, so...
Just a, that's a little late question, but I thought I heard you break by the timer, scheduling is changing. Is that accurate? We're not, we're no longer doing lock-by blocks in the indoor?
It's currently at seven, seven.
So we're not doing...
We talked about that the last one. The decision was being through at seven, seven. Who made this decision? Administration? You? Obviously, before, I know during the interview process and stuff, this was talking about, but, you know, when done correctly, block scheduling is very beneficial, and I'm not talking ninety minutes, I'm talking seventy minutes, seventy-five minutes. Sometimes ninety minutes can be a little overwhelming. Seventy minutes, I can, I can really do what I need to do as a teacher, to help really work on these competencies, to meet kids where they are. When I talk about you guys work back to Victoria, yeah, that's quick, that's like drive-through education right there. I mean, I may as well get mine McDonald's and wait, but the kids don't have time to process, so I just want to kind of voice that. I don't think it's something you should rule out, I think what's gonna have to happen, if you decide to change it, and you really think about this, is, you know, work with teachers to develop, what does it look like to work in a seventy-minute class? What does it look like to work, like, I used to do actually an hour and thirty-five minutes per class as a middle school math teacher, talk about painful math, but it can be done. You know, some kids don't appreciate that. But it can be done, but it takes training, and it takes teamwork, and it takes flexibility and planning to be able to recognize what kids need. And so, when you give that additional time, I think it can be very powerful in getting kids to really accomplish the goals that they have.
I can appreciate that. I think, I think, from my perspective, a lot of the challenges that we've had with scheduling, with grading, over the last however many years, has been an inconsistent approach to application. Not everybody having the same information, or feeling like they have the same information, everybody rolling in the same direction. And talking, hey, this is what we're gonna do, some people get training outside the building, and it's supposed to move you back, but not everybody buys in, and it's not a relationship there to take that information, absorb it, and buy it and move forward. So it's, it's just, I think if done correctly, no matter what we choose to do, if it's done in a way where it's rolled out or ramped up in a certain way, then it will work. But if we just choose, like, this is the new hot thing, this is how we're gonna go, and here it is, and everybody kind of figured it out, then everybody's doing it a different way, no matter what the system is, so, you know, I think...
And that's the whole, the whole purpose of bringing it back, because not everyone's on the same page, not everyone's in the same position, understanding. So we need to just rein it back in, and stop the training.
But I think we, you know, if we move forward in a different, we have to be really thoughtful, because this is, I think, this is probably the second time we bring it back in. You know, so, you know, it's, we've gotta find something, and, and, you know, whether it's another committee that moves forward and does this, really takes a thoughtful approach that's not rushed. And says, you know, in three years, this will, everybody will, will want everybody, this is how we're gonna do it, this is how we're gonna get there, or whatever it is, but...
Then your councilor should be doing it this way, the new schedule, seven or eight periods, you know, they did put in that focus learning time. And so that also needs to be looked at in terms of teachers and structure, and how we can get the kids to move forward. The bad part about that is you put transition between when you have kids scattered all workplace, taking time to get where they need to go. So that eats up class time, where I already have twelve kids in my class, that extra four, for fourteen minutes or so, I could be working with this in one group. So, and then now we have to worry about a transition period, and another transition period afterwards, or where kids are going, and they just show up there. So that really kind of puts a damper on things. But, you know, if we do it right, and we talk about this, and we figure a plan to get kids in a appropriate place, put them in a place that they're supposed to be, it'll help. It helps if I actually talk about it, but it will just happen to be, you know?
Yeah. I think that's what it is. Would that be part of this, or?
I mean, it could be part of that conversation, sure. I don't think anything's off, but you want to start with that. And we, before you want to do, include five years as a district, you know, the report card is building it, and then putting the crash and plant in place, and following the steps. You set up skipping one through ten, you're on number fifteen.
Yeah, I mean, this way, we can have professional help, kind of guiding the student, and...
This is... I was just giving the, we had that survey around students, and we had a survey around the teachers. And I would say that, you know, for the high school, the response was largely positive on both sides. And when you're still, there's a different, and a big focus, the teachers love the ninety minutes, it's too long, they're working, so it's out of this, it's good. But then they then just turn around and eliminate everything, you know, and, so we went from regular scheduling to the math, and back to regular scheduling, and now we're gonna go back to the, you know, I guess more of a block schedule, and we have kids in the front for years of high school with four different schedules. Community, and so we appreciate some consistency, rather than sort of just bouncing around.
I really liked your modified block schedule when I first saw it, and it was pretty exciting, because that allotted four times to do a lot of that project base. What else you have to follow through on the project base, that the summatives for the competencies, give those kids extra time. So that, to me, actually looked really promising, and I like your schedule for that.
So we did go back to the block?
No, so we were, no.
Oh, okay.
We went back to seven, we were at seven periods, then we went to a modify, so it was three days of seven, seven periods, and then two days of the block schedule.
That was last year.
Yeah, like a high one, that was last year. And now, there was a lot of, there was quite a bit of pushback in the middle school level.
Yeah, I remember the survey and all that.
Yeah, and, you know, so then the decision was made, we're back to seven, seven periods.
Okay, that's where I thought we were at.
So, I, we just, you know, we just, whatever we do, moving forward, doesn't mean we can't change, it always change. I mean, but we just have to do it properly, so that it's the body in this beforehand, so that we're not, you know, sticking up and everything, it's a big fight. Very nothing else, I would accept a meeting to adjourn. Okay, second chair. Uh, I think we're placing, closing our eye, closing our day, and we're adjourned.
It's nothing, it's nothing, and I don't want to jinx it by saying it's gonna be a short meeting, but...